In the, to the out on the ball, just planning, I think, what we're supposed to do today.
It's early in the morning. So, did you have, did you have the sign up?
And it's, it actually only takes you, seriously, ten minutes if that.
You just sort it in.
Because it's really just a drawdown of what you feel the priorities are underneath.
The priorities?
Oh, you did.
The link in an email I sent him.
Yeah.
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 Survey.
Yeah. You sent me the same email?
Yeah, attachment on Thursday.
Yeah, where the PDF was of the, it was within there.
There's a survey attached, there's embedded in that.
Embedded in that.
A link to the survey.
Like, you can't do the survey on site.
You have to use the laptop, it's easy, it's because there's a drop and drag.
But I couldn't get the transfer.
There'd be a void.
Right, I get it, I just have to, yes, I get it.
The women did.
Which survey did you do?
Survey on strategic priorities.
Thursday, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, I'll tell you. Thursday.
Well, let me ask you a question. The situation that he said.
My question is, you, as always, it takes five minutes. There you go, you do so much typing, I don't do it on the iPad.
You don't have to type, you just have to drag it and whatever.
Yeah.
Priorities, we have one, right?
I think so, it is good to do.
Because it'll be interesting to see what we come up with as the majority of us, number one or number two.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, my voice, it's still not perfect. I want to call the special committee of the whole meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone to our February 25th special committee of the whole meeting. I'd like to first recognize that we are in the traditional territory of the state of First Nation. Our clerk today is Ms. Guri. The question period signup sheet is on the desk by the recording secretary. If during the meeting any member of the gallery has a question regarding an agenda item, please write down your name and the agenda item on the sheet. Start a question period, I will call on those who signed up to the committee. So, introduction of late items, Ms. Guri.
Thank you, worship, there are no late items.
Very good. Motion for adoption of the agenda. So votes. Second, Counselor Palmer, all those in favor, contrary, motion carried. And the first item is reports, this is a standard item. Ms. Guri, Governance and Priorities Committee.
Thank you, worship, so I will be doing a PowerPoint presentation, and the purpose is to provide council with the draft terms of reference and the establishment of the Governance and Priorities Committee, so there's been a move over. Does this work if I, can you hear me in the mic? So...
Sure.
Yeah, it's on, I just have, you have to talk right into this. So, speaking of this, we will be getting a headset, so that you don't have to be directly into this microphone. So, the purpose of this committee, the Governance and Priorities Committee, is to enable members of council to review upcoming and important issues and opportunities with members of the administration and the public, with a focus on understanding the broader policy implications of the items being considered. The highlights of the Governance and Priorities Committee will be that it includes all members of council, its focused discussion on one or two topics per meeting, the open forum for discussion and debate will be robust, subject matter experts invited to take part in the discussion, and agenda topics determined by ad hoc agenda planning committee consisting of the mayor, acting mayor, CAO, and city clerk. So, agenda planning. So, a list of emerging topics based on strategic themes. So, council's currently doing its strategic planning and working on the strategic themes. And often, and what we believe the Governance and Priorities Committee, I think, based on council's direction, it should be driven by the strategic plan and the themes that you decide on and adopt in your strategic plan. So, there'll be a list of emerging topics based on these strategic themes that will be developed by staff as well as council. This list of items will be brought to the ad hoc agenda planning committee, which will consist of the mayor, acting mayor, city clerk, and the CAO. And through this list, the agenda can be planned and developed. And then it'll go to the Governance and Priorities Committee. So, currently, council agendas are built on items, in the agenda have required regulatory or legislated rules, such as bylaw, rezoning, development matters, contracts, et cetera. So, only matters that are currently addressed by city policy are discussed at council meetings, leaving the avenue for the Governance and Priorities Committee to discuss those matters that aren't dealt with by legislation and policy. So, they will not be dealing, the GPC agendas won't be dealing with, like I just said, existing legislation regulations, and only matters which are not already addressed by current city policy are discussed at a GPC. However, an example, the affordable housing strategy, so that's an existing policy that's in place, but the implementation of that strategy hasn't commenced yet, and/or avenues on which to explore the implementation of that could go to the GPC committee, because there isn't already that in place. So, here's an example of what an agenda for the GPC committee would look like. The agenda headings would be focused on the four strategic planning themes. These aren't adopted yet, but this is just based on council's discussion thus far. And, for example, there could be a report under governance excellence, nothing under environmental responsibility, a presentation under economic health, and a report under livability. So, it's just a couple of items, not every subject, not every agenda heading needs to have something under it, because you want to stick to one or two items that you can fulsomely discuss. And then resolution action tracking, which we'll be going over, the next item on this agenda today, this afternoon, is the report tracking and the resolutions that council makes, and staff track these resolutions and update accordingly. We will add a column for the strategic planning and the four themes that council eventually adopts. And this way, when we report to council on the resolutions that they've made, you can see how many of those strategic themes have been hit, like how many, how many resolutions are you making that are actually in alignment with your strategic plan. So, the process that is outlined today in the report, and that I think is council's direction, would be that you establish the Governance and Priorities Committee. The special council meetings will continue on until the council procedure bylaw is amended and the COW is dissolved. The council procedure bylaw is amended reflecting the change from the Committee of the Whole to Governance and Priorities Committee, and the bylaw will address key date, calendar, delegations, et cetera. A public engagement process is created at the same time the council procedure bylaw is being amended, and this public engagement process will help to identify the delegations that currently come to Committee of the Whole meetings. When the Committee of the Whole is dissolved and it becomes a Governance and Priorities Committee, delegations on unrelated matters might not be appropriately addressed, or it might not be the appropriate avenue for them to come to a Governance and Priorities Committee. So, taking into consideration a corporate-wide public engagement, as well as the recommendations and methods that the community engagement task force undertook, creating some kind of public engagement process that will give the avenue to do correct public engagement and take it away from being delegations at a Governance and Priorities Committee. And then the current committees are on hold right now, so this is another thing that will have to come back to council to be addressed more fulsomely, but right now they're on hold, and once the strategic plan is established and the GP meeting, GPC meetings are underway, other committees will be formed based on needs, emerging themes, et cetera, if you go with that route. So, it's, again, it'll be a separate report to council, but it could look like this. Established through the GPC once the strategic plan is finalized. So, you have your GPC committee with one or two agenda topics per session, and the committee is struck based on, committees are then struck based on need and in accordance with the strategic plan. So, these are just some examples of what we have now, some current former committees, some that are on hold and some that are carrying on, but based on your strategic plan and evolving from the Governance and Priorities Committee, council could go this way and have the committees come from the GPC. So, the desired outcomes, you establish the Governance and Priorities Committee, you adopt the terms of reference, the council procedure bylaw is amended to eliminate COW meetings, and the Governance and Priorities Committee, it can either wait until the council procedure bylaw is amended and carry on with afternoon COWs, or in place of these afternoon Committee of the Whole meetings, we could have the GPC committee now on the same day as COW meetings, and then once the Committee of the Whole is, is kaput and done with the council procedure bylaw, then the GPC would replace the Committee of the Wholes. The ad hoc agenda planning committee will review the list of emergent topics and compile list of agenda topics for discussion, and committees will be struck based on need and in alignment with council's strategic plan. So, way back, it's mentioned in a couple committee reports that I've done over the last years, is the report on governance framework that the city commissioned way back in 2013. We refer to it as the Watson Report, and it's actually a really good report, it's available on our website, and it's a report that the city has done, and it touches on decorum and council procedure bylaw amendments and committees, and how good governance basically has council's committees aligning with their strategic plan. And once a strategic plan is redone by a council, or a new council on a new term, committees should be looked at, and to make sure that they are refreshed and in alignment with council's strategic plan. So, it's not a bad time to be doing this with our committees anyways, because of the current circumstances. And that's basically it. I know it's a big topic, but it's a short presentation, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Ms. Guri, I assume you would advise me personally before you start taking questions, maybe put a motion on the floor, and then take questions?
Certainly, yes, you could do it that way.
Would that be the most appropriate?
Definitely, you could have, if you have questions on my presentation, then you could do that now, and then, and then put a motion on the floor, I don't mind.
Counselor Palmer.
Thank you, worship, and through you too, Ms. Guri. The ad hoc committee, I've looked at other towns where they're doing this sort of thing, and sometimes they have the agendas planned out for the better part of a year. And they may not be specifically agenda items, but they say, okay, in this month we're going to be talking about active transportation, in this month we're going to talk about agriculture, whatever. So, is that something that we plan on doing, or so that we can give the community a heads up?
Thank you, I hadn't thought about giving the community a heads up, actually, that's a, that's a good point to have a further look at, but we definitely have thought of creating what Mr. Rudolph calls a matrix, that plans out a year's worth of meetings. And with the ad hoc committee, we could go through this list of a year's worth of meetings with emerging topics, and if something urgent or out of the blue comes up, we can adjust the timeline accordingly, like the agenda doesn't need to be set in stone, so if we have the whole year, but emerging topics come, come and need to be addressed before they're scheduled, definitely that's something we're looking at doing, and sharing it with the community is maybe a part of the public engagement process that we look into.
And the reason, the reason I did raise that is so, there's lots of people in the community who are probably much more experienced, or have more knowledge on many of these topics than we do, and it would be, give them the opportunity over a period of time to either prepare to become a delegate, or to, or maybe we'll have some sort of opportunity for them to have their input ahead of time, so that when we do have that meeting, it's all in front of us at that time.
And it's there for your consideration.
Yeah.
That's a great suggestion.
In fairness, I want to emphasize that there's no group committee cabal meeting that's saying this is what we are planning to do, so I just want to draw the language in, so that this is an organic process. Counselor Hemmings.
Thank you, through you too, Ms. Guri, thank you for this, I think you've done a really nice job of capturing what we're after. I have a couple of questions that we've talked about, but I just want to put on the table. The first is this establishment of a community engagement process for the delegations. Do you imagine that there will be yet another meeting of all of us where we receive those delegations, so by creating a GPC, we're actually creating another, like doing it all in the COW right now? We're dividing that into two, and we're going to require another full meeting to receive delegations?
That is one of the possibilities, just kicking around in my head, but it would have to be something that council decides and looks into different, different recommendations, but one of them is every couple of months, or every quarter, a town hall type thing, where delegations could come, and, and using one of the methods that the community engagement task force looked into, using one of those methods at those meetings, and having them every other month, or every three months, even monthly if it was required, but some sort of process like that, which can address delegations wanting to come speak to you on certain topics, yet having the Governance and Priorities Committee focused on governance and priorities, and council on council, and having an avenue for this public engagement.
I'm kind of curious about that, like, so we've had so many delegations around the temporary modular housing, and I imagine if we say, well, we're only doing that quarterly, people might feel really limited in that, in their ability to come and see us.
Yes.
So, I'm just putting that out there, and I can see that potentially being an issue.
Worship, this is getting at one of the fundamental issues that you're going to have to decide on, is the role of public engagement during your council and committee meetings versus other avenues. I mean, I'm not sure there's one right answer, but would it be your preference to allow for public engagement during the same session that you're dealing with the topic, and you need to put some parameters around that, because it could become three quarters of your meeting, as opposed to the purpose which was you. So, certainly doable, but you'd have to put some parameters around it, or else it could end up taking more of your time than you thought it might, so that's one of the inputs we're looking for here today, is really, is, because we start, we have to start pushing the public engagement topic into this equation now, as we start to firm this up, so that ultimately put into the bylaw. So, this is the first throw on the table, see what you think, and you need to solid this a bit into the direction that you want, holding the integrity of the committee itself as paramount, and then how do you want to include engagement during the committee meetings and/or the add-ons to it.
And just to add to that, definitely there'll be further discussions with council and requiring their input regarding the amendment of the procedure bylaw, because that will need to be addressed as the main part of the procedure bylaw besides getting rid of the Committee of the Whole meetings. We need to focus on, or find an avenue for delegations, and how we're going to address that. So, there's going to be follow-up meetings on the procedure bylaw amendment that's required, as well as public engagement and that process, and how we're going to deal with those two items. So, they kind of have to be in tandem with one another for it to work. We can't amend the procedure bylaw, eliminating delegations without, I believe, council should have another avenue for the public to be able to engage, so I think they both need to be done in tandem.
Counselor Brown, is your hand up earlier? Just raising her. And it's Counselor Henson.
To the chair, yeah, I agree that there seems to be a little bit of a gap where the delegation could feed in, and I'm just curious, I got a few questions. The first is, in comparison to other cities where delegations of the public has something that they'd like to say to council, they pretty much can sign up in the current setup and have, you know, direct access to council, which has its pros and cons. How is that compared to other municipalities currently? Is my first question.
I don't know the names of the municipalities off the top of my head, so I can't give specific examples, maybe Mr. Rudolph could, but I know that it's not done the same way any two places, so everybody has different ways of handling delegations.
There are some examples, your worship, through Counselor, some municipalities will have question period and delegations at the beginning of every meeting, and it takes, those municipalities end up having council meetings that go past midnight every two weeks, and it's been doing it for years. And then there's other municipalities that have no, very strict parameters around the number of delegations and inputs, and it's very strictly managed, such that it doesn't get, you know, off course, I guess, so it's, there are no two examples that are the same. I mean, just, and there's no right or wrong answer, it's just, if you put a great deal of emphasis on public engagement at every meeting, then you will get it, and that's fine, but it's time-consuming, and at the same time you're trying to do the business, so you want to hear it, but there's some, my sense is that you probably would like to find a way to get the engagement during the process of having those discussions, or leading up to it, but maybe not, and maybe it depends, it would be a discretionary item, because some of them might be big topics that you need to have a town hall on, and stuff like that, so I, there is no, there is no one way, it could be either, it's just how much weight you put on that in the course of doing your everyday business in terms of, if you can think of the experience that you've been having recently, in these afternoon Committee of the Whole workshops here, and if these became more of an engaging environment, because we're not talking that much different than what we've been doing, how would that look? What would you change? And where does public engagement fit into this whole conversation on an ongoing basis?
And just to add, right now, currently, we have two different delegation processes for the two types of council meetings, the council meetings and the Committee of the Whole. So, for council meetings, you can sign up to be a delegation, but it has to be a related, an item that's on the agenda, so it has to be an item that is being brought forward, such as a DVP, or a zoning amendment, or those types of legislated reports, you can sign up and be a delegation and speak to that item, as you'll see later tonight. And then Committee of the Whole has been the opportunity for members of the public to sign up to speak to an item that's not on the agenda. So, I think that's more what we have to address, and if council wanted to go further and address the delegations that we allow at council meetings, there's some we have to allow, under legislation, we have to allow people to be able to speak to certain matters, so it would be more the Committee of the Whole delegations that we would be addressing in the amendment and in the Governance and Priorities Committee.
In order, Counselors Turley, Armstrong, Martin, and Hemmings.
Thank you, worship, and I'm trying to speak louder, because apparently last meeting nobody could hear.
I listen to you everywhere.
So, I turned my hearing aids down, so I will speak loud. That's how it works. So, with regard to committees, I've been thinking that maybe the challenge, when you have a specific item that's happening in the community, if we have a committee that would deal with XYZ issue, where the people that present to the committee and then flow through to this Governance Committee, rather than having it have nothing to do with the committee and have to somehow get in front of the Governance Committee, is that, that's what you're looking for?
Yeah, I think it could flow both ways, so pretend all of the little bubbles around the big bubble were current committees and that council has established. I think the information could flow both ways. I think it could go from the Governance and Priorities Committee decides that a committee is necessary, because the subject matter needs further work, and so a committee be struck based on that GPC discussion, and then from that committee, I think that information could flow back to the GPC. So, I think committees are a great way to utilize public engagement, like have the public engage, and committees could be utilized for that.
So, and just to add to that, we all know we get a lot of emails, and maybe this would be an opportunity to forward an email on a specific topic to a specific committee, as opposed to throwing it through to different staff, and the committee could have a delegation or...
Or correspondence item, something like that, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Armstrong.
Yeah, so on that, if we go to the committee structures roughly like that, then does that committee then report to the GPC instead of council, as is been previous?
I think that would, for having the information flow back and forth, and the public engagement piece, I think that that would be ideal, and then the GPC would, would...
And then the motion, then, so it's actually adding an extra step to an irreversible process?
Yes, we do have the consent items on our council agenda, though, that could be swiftly dealt with that way.
So, then it went through the GPC, and it was voted on at the GPC, you put it to consent unless somebody asked to pull it out?
Yeah, I think that it would be a more fulsome discussion when we talk about committees, because I'm thinking this through, and right now my head's going both ways, I'm thinking that some items, such as the finance and audit issues, dealing with finance, once they're dealt with at a finance and audit committee, they could go straight to a council meeting, so I don't want to say everything but that committee would have to go through GPC and then to council, I think we have to have further discussions and look into that. But I think what Counselor Turley was saying about the engagement and, and information coming from committees to GPC is a, is a great tool, I think the committees could flow both ways from the GPC.
Thank you.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you, through the chair, so if the intent, right now with the Committee of the Whole, we have delegations that can't present on items not on the agenda, so the intent would be, there would not be this available under the GPC.
So, right now, that's, it's not what the terms of reference say, and it would require a bylaw amendment, because delegations are addressed in the council procedure bylaw. So, right now, nothing is changing until the council procedure bylaw is changed, but that is what staff, and I believe council's intention, we need a different way to deal with delegations, so that the Governance and Priorities Committee, from what my understanding of what council wishes, and from what you heard from Mr. Cuff, is that it should be a, a meeting where you can sit around the table with subject matter experts, dealing with one or two topics that are of interest to the community and of council, and align with your strategic plan, and to have a more casual, fulsome, in-depth discussion, delving into the matter. So, having delegations not related to those one or two items that you'll be addressing, I don't know if it's the appropriate avenue for, for that to happen, that's why I think staff have to look at a public engagement process, as well as an amendment to the council procedure bylaw.
So, if I may, further to that, so perhaps, do you have to have the GPC twice a month, or could that be once a month, and then do a public consultation once, for public engagement?
Well, to dissolve the Committee of the Whole, if we amend the bylaw to dissolve the Committee of the Whole, my understanding of what Counselor Hemmings' intention and council's direction was, was to replace the Committee of the Whole with the Governance and Priorities Committee, which currently meets alternate weeks to council meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hemmings.
Thank you. So, dealing with delegations was one of, I knew it was going to be a sticking point, and in my mind, I wasn't sure what it was going to look like, I think I had gone to, perhaps if we have, say we have two topics we're going to discuss, and we allot 45 minutes for each discussion, and then a half an hour for those delegations that aren't, that aren't appropriate at council, because they're not attached to an agenda item, that's, that's one, I think that's kind of where my mind went to, but I, I think that's a bit messy, and the way you framed this, I, personally, I would love to see our delegations going to the committees, so for, you know, all of the housing issues that we've been hearing, it would be great to see them go through the Public Safety Committee, and then having a report from the Public Safety Committee, or a verbal report from the chair who's a council person, to say, these are the themes we're hearing, these are the potential solutions. But then for those who really feel like they need an audience with council, and the committee is not going to do, and I don't know how we would assess or gauge that, but maybe having a quarterly, just kind of public, I wouldn't even call it an engagement, but where we actually, we listen to the public and what's kind of going on for them, and then if we're, if we have an avenue that people can go to, being the committees, then having a quarterly check-in with the committee, I think would be sufficient.
I think that's a great suggestion. I was ready. I think that's a really great suggestion, and we can definitely report back, like I said, with the public engagement options and options on delegations, because we do have to figure out what council would like, and the direction that they would like to provide to us in amending the council procedure bylaws.
I could see it be so frustrating for someone who has something that they want to share with us, and we're only needing quarterly to do that, but the issue is pressing right now, and so, yeah, I think the committees would give them that, a good option.
Any other questions?
Oh, yes, Counselor Brown.
Yeah, the first one I think is common, because I think I'm starting to get lost a little bit in the discussion, is that I was under the impression from Mr. Cuff and... bit in the discussion is that I was under the impression from Mr. Cuff in certain subsequent conversations around it, that the GPC was really meant to be the place where you can deep dive into certain policy topics or governance priorities and not be burdened down with a lot of the formalities, but I think also the, the inputs that go into account. So I, I think when we start to stray into, well, do we accommodate delegations or the on topic or the off topic, I think you're actually moving away from my philosophical understanding of what the GPC was meant to accomplish. So I do have some questions around the process for delegations, et cetera, et cetera. But I don't feel like we should just be tacking on engagement just for the sake of it if it's not serving council and its decision-making. So that's just my comment there. My, my question was from, actually, one of my questions was from something Mr. Cuff had said around, who is the Chair? He mentioned it, where the mayor is the Chair. It gives the mayor more of an opportunity to weigh in on topics that we don't normally get to. I'm not sure if that's something we want to consider or encourage. Or encourage, yeah.
So I just, to your comment first, that is exactly what my understanding of the governance and priorities committee is as well. And so today, basically, by striking a governance and priorities committee and adopting the terms of reference, that system is what you are adopting. We do have to address delegations that currently go to committee of the whole and a public engagement process to kind of give another avenue then. If we're going to eliminate delegations, I think the public would need at least direction as to how then do they engage with council if there's no longer delegations. So I think I'm totally on the same page with you as to what Mr. Cuff said about the governance and priorities committee and delve into one or two topics. And then on your question about the Chair of the committee, so currently, interestingly enough, in our council procedure bylaw, previously and the current one, and maybe as long as I've been at the City of Nanaimo, for committee of the whole, the Chair's supposed to be the acting mayor. And that's just never been followed. So we're actually breaching our council procedure bylaw and I'm admitting that to the world right now. So--
Now you're telling me--
Yeah, I know, I know. So I think that, I'm not sure why councils past haven't followed that process. And I'm not sure if this council would like to continue that for the governance and priorities committee. I think there's advantages. It gives, it gives members of council experience in that chair position. So it's something definitely for you to consider. And when we amend the council procedure bylaw, it'll say the acting mayor chairs the governance and priorities committee or it'll be eliminated because I think it does need to be addressed because it's not currently being followed.
And just a quick follow-up is my question, you know, if we're, if we're thinking about delegations, I, what comes to mind too is what about question period at these GPCs? You know, my personal opinion on question period is not often. It doesn't feel like the question, it feels like statements rather than questions. And then the questions tack on. Not always, there's legitimate questions. But again, you know, is this something that is wanted or desired, something that is a little more focused, but also less formal than a council meeting? I don't know if that's a question for you. I think that's a question I'm just sort of throwing out there.
It's another thing that council can definitely look into when they work on amending the procedure bylaw.
Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I'm just brainstorming here a little bit. So I'm thinking, based on what Councillor Turley has said, is that perhaps we're making, we make a committee for a topic that's going to be coming up, say, eight months from now. And I'll just rather say act of transportation as an example. And the committee is struck specifically for that GPC meeting when it happens eight months from now. Or it's, or it's given to another committee that has similar mandates. And then we have a public engagement process during those eight months. We then have delegations go to the committees that make their presentations. And then, and they, and then out of that, we invite at the GPC, we invite the committee or the committee reports, right? And we have that in front of us. We then invite delegations based on the delegation that we presented to committee and all the recommendations that hit them directly and other men who we think would be important there. And then we, and then we have our meeting. That then gives us, gives the committee the mandate to say, at the end of your, at the end of this process, we want you to engage the public on the following topics and at the end, we will be deciding this. So maybe that is something we could do. It has your public engagement, has the ability to do delegations. Then we would invite delegations to our meeting based on people are out making application. And then we would have the discussion at the--
When you say eight months, I'm reminded of Harold Wilson's line about in politics, a week is a long time and a year is eternity.
So we're only going to halfway to eternity.
Councillor Armstrong.
And just quickly, one thing that I'd be remiss to say because Ms. Snell Grove would be upset with me, is when council is deciding to strike these committees and that we do have to consider the resources available that, that are required to do the work for these committees. So that is something to keep in mind and that will, will enlighten you on as, as you attempt to form these committees.
Councillor Armstrong.
I guess my question is, isn't this just how the COW is supposed to function? We just haven't followed it? Like, I don't know why we need to change it when the COW object can do everything we're saying. It naturally does. Like when the committees were running, we would take the delegations at committee. They would come to the public safety committee regularly. That information then would be formed part of the record, which would then go to the city council meeting and they got that. And any motions made from here would be brought forward at the council meeting, which I thought worked very well when we did it.
So currently, we still are doing it that way for finance and audit. So recommendations made at that meeting and committee of the whole go to council for, they now from committee of the whole go to council for adoption because the committee of the whole doesn't have the powers now. So yes, basically with the amendment of the procedure bylaw, the committee of the whole was, tried to be changed with that amendment to be what council is looking for with a, with a governance and priorities committee. But I think being a new council and wanting something new and fresh to call your own, a governance and priorities committee will very much be what a committee of the whole is, just with a different name and slightly different engagement.
So I guess that's my question. We're doing all this extra work for something that already exists if we just applied it properly?
Worship, we've got a system now that we've created that's new-ish with this council. The COW meetings, committee of the whole, have started at the evenings, late afternoon. And that's been our committee of the whole. We've done, we probably have precedent for this before, but most recently, we've added these extra afternoon sessions here in this committee room, which is very different than down the environment at the other place with all the process that we, the formalities that go with that committee. What we need to do now is, this is more the format, I think, that GPC is going to look like if we go down this path. And we have the problem of having two separate meetings in two separate locations. What we, what the goal of it is trying to merge the two into one. So we have the evening version and the afternoon version synchronized so that it all flows into one. This is what committee of the whole is. And we have to decide is it here, is it down there and all that type of thing, maybe at the times. But we're kind of in a hybrid situation right now. And it's working, but it's not, it's, there's, this is a special meeting and that's another meeting. So we, even if you keep the committee of the whole, you probably have to sort this out a little bit more. And so I think just, you're just taking the 30,000 that's left right now. And we, but we do need to sort things out. We're actually transitioning our committees intermittently from down at the conference center to this room as well, which is great for roll up the sleeves kind of commentary, but maybe not as good for public engagement as, so, so I think there is reason to sort it all out regardless of what you call it. And I think Councillor Hammonds or one of you said at one time, you felt like we're 85% there. And to a certain extent, I believe you are. Where we're off is, it's kind of, the evening meeting feels like a completely different event. And it is still called committee of the whole. And with the delegations and the formalities that go with it. So is that formality piece work? That's, that's what this governance and priorities committee is intended to get away from. Keep the formalities for the council meetings and keep the rest of it. And I think every second week, we have enough information and material to go through council. We need, I think we need at least every second week. If once a month would be hard to do unless you had an overnight kit.
May I follow up on that?
You're next anyway.
Yeah, I guess my question on that though is that we still have to be formal when, when we're having a meeting because it's a meeting, we have to follow the same rules. So I don't see the big difference, to be quite honest, because we still have to have our, everything follows the same.
Just answer the specific question. When you say we're, we're already doing it, do you mean this setting or do you mean the committee of the whole at the VICC?
Well, either or. It's the same to me. Like I prefer--
Very different.
I much prefer being down at the, the conference center myself. I think you get more people down there. People don't like this room particularly. Parking sometimes isn't a show here, depending on the time of day. Hearing is better down there. And I think people, a lot of people I talk to prefer it down there, but we'd have to ask some people here that they prefer it down there. But I mean, whether we're sitting at this table or that table, the same discussions are happening.
My impression, if I may, oh, I'm getting a look. I'll be super brief. My impression of this meeting is quite a bit different than the committee of the whole meetings we have down there, which have a bit of a laundry list of things that we need to get through in order to get them through to council. We have delegations. Whereas I think this setting is what I was referring to when I said we're 85% of the way there. So this, and I'm not saying that it's my way or not my way, just this is what I'm interested in in doing. I don't care where it is. But this conversation where we have one or two things that we're really talking about, I actually don't think we shouldn't be inviting delegations. I think that can get a bit complicated, especially delegations not on the topic. And to your point, Councillor Brown, I think, you know, when you're, when you were saying, well, why are we even looking at delegations? I think because if we shut the committee of the whole down, we need to have some plan in place for where do the delegations go. So that's why I, I think they should appropriately go to the committees that funnel up to the GPC and then have maybe a quarterly opportunity for people to come.
Hold this, don't worry, it's a long list. I'm afraid we finished, Councillor.
Yeah, that's good for you.
Thank you. Lots of discussion.
I could debate it.
Lots of, lots of-- Let me have Councillor Thorpe first.
Thank you, Your Worship. I agree with many of the comments that a lot of people have said. So here's my thoughts. First of all, I think in our current model, there's a lot of confusion in the general public between what is a council meeting, what's a committee of the whole meeting, and why do you meet sometimes at four o'clock and sometimes at 7:30 or seven, and sometimes it's on TV and sometimes it's not. A meeting to look the same and sound the same, what's the difference? And I'm, and I'm hard pressed sometimes to explain the difference. So to me, it starts with the fact that this proposed GPC, which I support, is a committee. It's not a council meeting. And I think we have to, as Councillor Armstrong said, go back to the original intent and let's clarify that a council meeting is informal setting and deals with specific topics. And there is allowance for delegations to come and speak to those topics. So it's not like we're getting rid of delegations totally. If something's on an agenda for a council meeting, people can sign up to talk to it within our parameters of our, of our bylaw. To me, the GPC or GPS is, I'll continue to refer to--
No, 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 no.
Is, I like the idea. I don't see it as a place for delegations. I think it's a business meeting. It's a committee meeting around a table. We talk about the priority topics that we want to delve into. So I see delegations being accommodated either by being on topic at a council meeting or, as others have suggested, going to our related committees. And that's the way it has worked in the past. And I think that's appropriate. So I would support that. As far as Chair, I really like the idea of the acting mayor chairing the GPC committee. I think that's great. It's an opportunity for experience and also gives the mayor a break and he can be part of the discussion. Formality, I think, as Councillor Armstrong said, yeah, we, it's not like we're going to be having no rules. It's still going to be following meeting procedure and a degree of formality. And I think that's necessary. But I think we need to really clarify that this would just be a committee. And as far as where is it held, I'm divided on that. But a committee to me is around a table like this. And so I would sort of lean to having them here, having all of our committee meetings in this room or something similar and having our council meeting in that very different location.
The, the one comment I'll make related to Councillor Hemmings and I think Councillor Thorpe's point about the committee of the whole and council and what's the difference and, and seeing a difference between meetings held here and there. Since the amendment to the council procedure bylaw where we tried to make committee of the whole's more like a GPC, it didn't work. And I don't think it still has fully worked because of the years and years and years, the City of Nanaimo gave, the council gave delegation, like authority to the committee of the whole, and it basically became a second council meeting. So to switch the public and council and staff's view of what a committee of the whole was supposed to be and is intended to be is really hard. I think changing the name to governance and priorities committee and basically having these afternoon sessions as the new Monday alternate to council meetings meeting, I think is, it's fresh, it's new, and I think it would work rather than keeping it called committee of the whole.
Thank you. Councillor Hammonds.
Oh, yeah.
Here, here. Okay. Councillor Brown.
Councillor Thorpe, you said, that's about everything I wanted to say except twice more articulate.
Must be that education. Somebody's been eating an eye of--
Oh, yes. But the only thing I sort of ask and wonder is, is the GPC necessary, the place that we want all those other committee minutes and things flowing through? Or in a lot of instances, can they just not go to council? And, and I also wonder that about a lot of reports as well. Is there an opportunity for one, to get a more robust dialogue that we're looking for, but also introduce a, a process that might make just moving business along more efficient as well?
So currently, and what we try to address in the new procedure bylaw, is the consent items on the council agenda. And we have been moving, even prior to the amendment, like Councillor Armstrong was saying, we have been moving committee recommendations directly to council for adoption. I think once a committee, I think it's then for council to discuss if they wish to, the recommendations from a committee. But no, I don't think it has to funnel to GPC prior to going to council, the more I've been thinking about it. Though I do think that if the GPC has some work to do for a committee, it could funnel back and forth through that work that the GPC has asked the committee to do for them. And the committee could report back to GPC on the work that the GPC wants the committee to report back to them on. So I think the flow back and forth for those instances. But I think recommendations from committees could go directly to council, including the GPC's recommendations.
Councillor Castle.
So I've got one question and then a comment. First question is, currently, we have two council meetings a month and then two COWs a month. It just alternates. And then we've been adding on, special committee or committee of the whole workshops in the afternoon before the COW or the regular council meetings. In terms of integrating like public input delegations where people can bring stuff forward, could, like, could we have still the two-count regular council meetings of the month and then have the GPC sort of like in the alternating weeks in the afternoon? And then once a month, we do the GPC here and then we just flow down there like we've been doing and have the COW where the delegations can show up, kind of like what we would do in tradition and, and appear that way? Or is that, does that add like in terms of like time, is that an unreasonable time commitment for everybody?
I'm just trying to provide clarity, whatever system works. But I think I'm more leaning towards Councillor Thorpe's suggestion because my experience is primarily delegations that go into council meetings. Interesting after where I've been. So there's been delegations set up there that this was truly more of a committee format.
Right.
Often, this doesn't seem to prove itself to be enough. And then the council seems to find a way to add, add extra meetings or something to deal with the extra council agenda. So we actually had something called executive committee, which looked very much like committee of the whole, which is a dress rehearsal for council. And then we also had-- Ban it all. So I don't know if there's a perfect system. So I don't know if there's a perfect system, but I think what Ms. Gurrie was probably about is shifting... We may have to shift some of the mechanics of what appears to be taking place at the committee of the whole to the council meetings in some year. The physical separation is bait, I guess, but it's also clearly basically signaling a change. If it's on the cameras and we're sitting at the same tables doing similar things at the council and committee of the whole meetings down at the conference center, it looks very much like it's the same thing, but people don't really understand the differences. So I think this is trying to differentiate that, create a committee environment. There will be times when there's materials that are going to be test-driven here with council before they go to a formal council meeting is to help sort of unpack that a bit. We have examples tonight where big topics are going forward, and perhaps it would have been preferable to have a chance to go over those before you receive them there, and you may decide to refer them back to a committee of the whole or a GPS, which works both ways. You could get something and send it back. So identify, as Counselor Vaughn said, the planned major topics that will be scheduled throughout the course of the year as much as possible. Have enough flexibility that you could add topics on an as-required basis to deal with it throughout the year. So we will need probably at least two months to do that. This has been working good for staff, I'll admit, on the afternoons, because it's much more accessible for people to come and go than it would be necessarily in the evenings for at least some of the staff. What I'm taking from council so far is that we are... If we went with this, we would be having GPS, GPC here, eliminating... And moving towards an elimination of the evening cows down at the conference center. Migration of our bylaws procedures to sort of between council and this. And paralleling this is some clarity around our whole public engagement process, which needs to inform to a certain extent our bylaws. So all these need to go in tandem, and time is marching on in terms of getting on with our committees. And so I think you're in the cusp of starting to hopefully give us some direction on comfort around that. We're finding states of suggestion here of alignment with the strategic plan and the themes, but you could probably tuck each of those existing committees under any of those themes. Public Safety Committee could be a vulnerability. I mean, vitality could be... You know, so you could have that or you could refresh that whole thing as well. And we're suggesting you probably should think about... Start thinking about that. Ms. Gurrie indicated there's going to be a report coming, but any current preliminary thoughts on that might be too far ado today, but it must be helpful to get a sense of that so we can come to you and see another one of these sessions on that topic and not to visit the future.
Another session like this on the amendments that are necessary to the council procedure bylaw, I believe, is definitely necessary, and we'll be coming back to you. So today, council or the committee of the whole would be recommending to council to establish the GPC committee and adopt the terms of reference. And then the next step would be that the GPCs could replace these afternoon committee of the wholes that we've been having on committee of the whole days until such time as we can amend the council procedure bylaw. And at the same time that we're working on amending the council procedure bylaw, which I would like it if council could allow staff around three months to get the process of amending the procedure bylaw as well as the engagement process and everything straightened out well as coming back here and getting more direction and reporting back to council on our progress. So we're amending the procedure bylaw, working on a public engagement process, which I really like the ideas that have come up here today. And then we would then be eliminating the committee of the whole, and the GPC would still be every other week on opposite weeks of council meetings, and council would have to decide with the amendment to the procedure bylaw what time they would be held, who would be the chair. All of those details are addressed in the procedure bylaw. So today is just about establishing the committee and the terms of reference, and everything else has been great to hear and kind of get a feel, but we do need to report back and come back to you.
Counselor Hemmings and Counselor Vaughn.
Thank you. Just a note on the amenities. I'm a fan of having the GPS here for all of the reasons mentioned.
We won't need the GPS once we're not lost.
I would never leave the college anything but the GPS. But I do know that the one kind of issue we've all heard is that the videos aren't great. So do we have any plans in place to make people who are watching... I'm not sure if it's... It must be a gallery issue, not because people aren't watching this. It's not being recorded, so...
So it is being recorded. Yep, it is recorded. The issue that we had a member of the public speak about was the presentation materials. So from home, and when you're watching the video at home, you can't see the presentation on the screen. So IT has pointed out to me on Thursday that there's a simple button we can push, and I believe we have been pushing it today, so that people at home won't see me and all of us, they'll be able to see the screen as it's been on and staff can switch back and forth views. So that's addressed. In the past, there was some issues with the sound quality, and I think I sent you all an email that I've been monitoring that, and we've been looking at installing different microphones. But after some consideration with IT on the cumbersomeness... Is that a word? Of all of the microphones that would be installed and buttons and lights and timers, it would really take away, I think, from the less formal atmosphere here, and the sound quality, we haven't had complaints in a long time. So to address some hearing problems that some members of the gallery might be having, we are going to have instead of the microphone install a couple of hearing devices, hearing that help with hearing for audience members, as well as a headset for presenters. So presenters such as Tracy Lawrenson for the strategic plan, who the presentation she gave wasn't set up to stand at a microphone like this, and/or for other presenters or guests that we have that would benefit more from sitting at the table or being more engaged and involved, a headset microphone so that you don't have to be standing and aimed right into this because even if I turn, it's gone. So that's another improvement, as well as a screen so that staff can see what people are seeing out in the public so they can monitor the quality of the video. So those are some improvements. The hanging microphones aren't the best at all, especially with the HVAC system, but we are constantly working on the improvements. I just think the way it was done initially wasn't the right way, and now to do it the right way or make improvements, it's hard without a complete expensive redo.
Counselor Vaughn.
Me? So as this is in the preliminary and to get this going, I'd like to move the recommendation that the committee of the whole recommend the council establish a governance and priorities committee and adopt the associated terms of reference as presented in the report titled Governance and Priorities Committee dated 29th February 2019.
Seconded, Counselor Vaughn.
I just believe that after hearing all the discussion and that, that it's time that we put forward... I think that Counselor Thorpe summed it up beautifully and that we can move forward.
Well, notwithstanding counsel... I do want to say something. Geography and environment do help determine culture and behavior, and notwithstanding, we have, you know, some worthy council watchers behind me. It's not that I'm ignoring them, but I speak and deal with this council, I think, in a much more informal way because I'm sitting around this comfortable table, and I think that's an important part of the process. I hear the concerns about public input, and as I understand it, there are many cities that allow a question period, and they seem to function okay.
Yeah.
Others don't have delegations in the same way. For me, the important thing based on politics is this. You only want a town hall meeting when you're an MLR or MP, when it's... And the only time you get any decent attendance is if the topic's courage and hot, then everybody's out. Otherwise, with great respect and no disrespect to those who come to council on a regular basis, all you get are the same old faces out. Now, is that an important thing for democracy? Absolutely, because having regular people come on a regular basis and observe what you're doing is a necessary check on your behavior and on what you're doing, a way for the public to be informed. At the same time, the question period for me has become, as I think was Counselor Brown pointed out, more of a statement period, where I try to encourage people to actually find a question in their statement and ask of council because that's the point of it. There is some balance in here between appropriate public input. And when I say appropriate, I don't mean in the controlled, elitist sense of we only want to hear from some government presentation, but a contribution that actually assists us as the elected representatives to make a decision that is in the public interest. And that is not always easy. If you have a hot topic, you've got a whole bunch of angry people, and maybe all you're going to hear is angry points of view without any sort of contribution to the rational debate. I think it's important to have that available, but at the same time, it is the 21st century, it is 2019, and tell me, did anybody not get emails all through their weekend this weekend? Did anybody miss any emails last week? Do our phones not ring? You know, is there not a form... Are there not a multitude of ways to contact your local politicians and express your views? So on one hand, I am a great believer in transparency, openness, and availability of the public, and I'm always happy to go to town hall meetings, and I'm always happy to be questioned. But I do want to question how much of that we want to consider as a council, given that we're pretty easy to contact and approach. I don't think there's one of us turns down a conversation. Grocery store, there's not one of us who doesn't have an email that chats to us throughout the weekends and every hour of the day. Somewhere along there... I'm hoping that Ms. Gurrie, who's busily writing down everything I say, I'm going to say somewhere along the way, we come up with perhaps a range of recommendations or possible solutions that take into account what I've heard you say today. Subject to some exceptions, the Governance and Priorities Committee is where we want to go. We do want to get a committee structure established that is responsive to the public, and maybe that even includes a, I don't know, a current affairs committee where people get to come in and bring the burning topic of the day that may not relate to a much more regularized system, as Counsel Vaughn is talking about, where these are big topics, big issues we want to do in the four years, and so three months from now, we're going to deal with this, and six months, we're going to deal with that. Somewhere in there that allows people not to just let off steam, but to make a contribution to a debate where we have to come to decisions fairly quickly. The housing thing, I wouldn't say is something where we have to come to a decision quickly. It's frankly more about understanding how it's affecting the public because we don't have control of that issue, but there may be other issues over which we have control in jurisdiction where we're going to want to have that public input in a fairly ready way. There's nothing to stop us from just voting to hold an open meeting. No rule in the book is there, Ms. Gurrie, that says, you know, council can't agree to hold a town hall?
No, you just need 24 hours' notice.
Sorry?
Just 24 hours' notice.
Just 24 hours' notice. So I think we need to keep those things in mind as we work with a high level of concern through what this process and governance structure and governance priorities committee is going to actually look like. And I think we want the public input, we want to move to this new process generally, we want some advice about some alternatives along the way. I think they're all useful ideas, and as Mr. McDowell keeps reminding us quite appropriately, there is no perfect system. And there will be some downsides to whatever we decide to do, but I think there's a general consensus that we need to have a new and a better system, and Mr. Cuff has certainly recommended it. And, you know, he's someone who has experience across the country in terms of dealing with councils and how they operate and which are generally seen to be more successful than others. Counselor Armstrong.
I agree with a lot of your points that you said. I do think we need to look at our committee structure because I recall when I chaired the public safety committee, I'd get a lot of people there that wouldn't come to council meetings because they felt uncomfortable coming to a smaller meeting. I think it's really important to hear that input. I know for regular council watchers, I've gotten some really good feedback on stuff that I can do to improve, so I really appreciate that, that they'll come forward and say, you know, I've been observing you do this, or whether it's for whatever, overspeaking or whatever. I think it's really important that we have that. I personally like the cow system. I thought it was working very well when it worked, you know, to go back to that because I think we're just remaining something that's basically the same thing and it requires a lot more work, but that's just my perception of it. And as to building a goal or whatever, but I think the community engagement part could happen at more of the committee structures, which would eliminate some of the issues when it comes to council meetings, like... Because I do believe we have a lot of people just speak, they're not actually talking about what's on topic, but, you know, things change continually. They need to have their voices heard or we're going to be a trouble. So that is one I can remember.
Oh, I have one other point, and I do remember it. I want to change just because I... I'm sorry, I just have a thing about the acronym COW. It bothers me in every way, shape, or form. I think it's entirely more laughter and earth-provoking than it is useful in describing what should be the important work of members of council. So if we do nothing else but change the name... I was about to say something else. Do nothing else than change the name, I'll be happy with that. Any further discussion on the motion? We are on the motion there, everybody. Counselor Gessel.
Was it said?
Yes. I think that it is going to be given attention, but I do... I feel more comfortable, yeah, that there's thought in how... What is the method that a community member or community group can bring something for to council that's previously not on people's radar? Get it out into the public forum where the newspapers can listen to it, present it all to all of council, so that it's out there. And I look forward to hearing what mechanisms will be in place because I think that I just feel more comfortable having that mechanism clear because if it's not clear, then if there is some urgent or that just needs to be brought to our attention, then you have to navigate different committees and this gets sent to GPC and then over to this, and it just becomes this, like, thing where right now, you know, there's direct... Even though that can really slow down and derail council's process, which I agree is a big issue as well, so I look forward to hearing ideas from you.
Remember my last point. Most of our question periods, not for us, it's for staff. Like, a lot of our questions that we get, we always have to refer to staff. So I think that's something we've got to remember, that the question period is supposed to be the questions of council, not staff. Great, all of the deals, body, that's it, summary, yay.
Counsel Vaughn.
One little question is, is there anything stopping us from having a regular council meeting to have an agenda which says open discussion and limit it to three delegations?
Essentially have that now, delegations. I mean, they're totally coming and speaking as long as this question giving us notice so that maybe we're somewhat prepared for the topics. Ms. Gurrie.
Currently, we have the open any topic for committee of the whole, the current committee of the whole, and any number of delegations can sign up at council meeting related to an item. We do have a three-person limit for committee of the whole, and that's determined by the first three... I've been asked that before. So it is something to consider, though I don't... I think we have given a lot of our ways to engage, like, for public engagement processes, so we'll definitely report back, but that's something that...
I think we have to accept in a reasonable way, as politicians, certainly my experience, you don't have public meetings where people come up to praise you or to talk positively about a topic. By and large, public meetings are where people let off their anger, steam, and frustration. I, for one, have been through enough of them that over time, I'd be happy to do it if other members of council wanted to join me every two or three months and let people come out and, you know what? They might feel better, we might feel better. There's nothing wrong with that, but as I pointed out, there's nothing to stop us doing that now as a council, we decided. I mean, I don't know that I would have particularly enjoyed it at Christmas time, but we could well have had a public meeting on the two sites. Would it have made people feel better? Would it have perhaps allowed an outlet for some of the anger and community frustration? It might have. It might have also provided for an opportunity for people to get answers, particularly from our staff or others, if we invited others to participate, from the other levels of government, if you will, or agencies involved. Looking back now, I'm thinking it might have been actually a fairly useful exercise. Are we going to face similar topics like that? Are we going to face similar topics like that during the course of this year? I would absolutely expect so, so I throw it out, not just for consideration of Ms. Gurrie, who will be working vigorously with her staff on this, and I'm sorry to burden them even more with all the things this council has done, but it's a topic for council to consider too. In other words, if we're not prohibited from doing it, there's nothing to stop us from doing it. And this council might want to do some things differently than other councils have done both here historically, or do in the process. I'm not asking we go for public meeting up sessions every once in a while, but on the other hand, it doesn't hurt, gives us a chance to get a view of the public, gives them a chance to be heard, and we don't have to continue to do it either, because there's no requirement to do it.
So that what you're talking about, like, be like, almost like an open town hall? Where anything's on the table?
It's a bit of a free, it could be a bit of a free, it could be a bit of a free-for-all, but I just throw it out. You know, there has to be control, because, I mean, unfortunately, I mean, forgive me for saying this, to some extent, it would appear that there were free-for-alls previously, but they were called council meetings. And I mean, behaviors were allowed, I mean, serious, behaviors were allowed that were absolutely inappropriate. When I'm talking about a free-for-all in a public meeting, I'm not talking about letting people get up to a mic and criticize individual counselors or attack their character or their behavior, or their background, or anything of that nature, but I am talking about a free opportunity for people to express a point of view and/or make a presentation and argument for or against something. Just throw it out for your consideration. I'm not asking for a decision or a motion or anything today, I might just think that it might be useful, and it might have the impact also of keeping people away from meetings where we went to get through the agenda and get it done, as opposed to staying for hours listening to people ask a bunch of wonderfully questions that are really making statements. Just may be a tool, I just, I throw it out for consideration. Mr. Rudolph?
Just as an extension, I worship, but somebody had mentioned the electronic town hall of the year at Christmas was not bad, and that you have that as a tool as well periodically put into the toolbox for getting input from people that are not coming in, but still it's another forum, which is other ways to do that, but that's, it doesn't just have to be a physical meeting, it could be a meeting that you bring people into the meeting through other sources, so that's another extension of that whole concept.
Counselor Simmons?
Just to reinforce, I obviously wasn't clear about it, but that's exactly what I was thinking of when I said a quarter meeting. So we push our delegations to the committees where they're appropriate, we keep the GPC for us and our conversation, and our one or two caucus, and then to, you know, ensure that we have a lot of information and engagement, and people feel involved, you know, once a quarter, we just have an open meeting for an hour or two, and people bring every, their laundry list to us. It gives them an outlet.
Question?
Counselor Gessler.
Oh, sorry. No, mine was, I was calling question.
Oh. I just like to say that I do, I do like this idea, and I think that it's important to have a pressure release valve, and it's an opportunity to, you know, canvass all our emails and be prepared to answer questions, and I think that's a lot of the time what people need is to have their questions answered.
Counselor Armstrong?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I was going to ask for the question, but he called just now. But I won't. No, I just, I will comment on this, because I'm not sure I agree with Counselor Gessler on this. Public engagement is fine, but to just say we're going to have a free-for-all within decorous boundaries, of course, I'm not sure I can accept that, and one of the reasons is how would staff be prepared for what topics might be asked and have answers ready? So I think there's, there's other ways we can look at, and I have to...
Maybe free-for-all is the wrong term, but something...
No, but I, so I, I know what you're saying, a wide open area. I guess I'm just not convinced it's necessary, given the other opportunities and means for engagement, but I think maybe we're off topic.
Okay.
That's all, thanks.
Say.
Go for it, Zinni.
I say question, I call some questions.
He wanted to be prepared, she says.
Yes, that's right.
No, I was calling question.
Definitely question. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carried and announced, so thank you, everyone.
I'm a driver.
Give her that, we'll look at it. Council resolutions update. Ms. Gurrie, you're going to end it with a voice like mine, you're not careful.
Well, I'm not going to go up there this one, I don't have a presentation, and I'll be briefed by council, who's thorough with these. This council resolution...
Counselor? Counselor Vaughn, don't interrupt.
So sorry, Ms. Gurrie, I just, I know Jay brought it up a couple times, and also Ms. Gurrie, but did we want to have a short conversation on committees as a precursor to, you know, the work that you're doing? Is that something that was desired?
Whatever council chooses, I'm okay with, but my initial thoughts are that we should get the strategic plan to a point where we're comfortable with that first, and then definitely your report needs to come to council at that time, or we need to have a session like this regarding your current committees that are on hold, but I think this premature strategic plan is nailed down, and you look at realigning the committees based on the strategic plan that you adopted.
We should just shut off debate, of course, but I think that's an eminence, appropriate response. Counselor Armstrong?
For this item that she's going to discuss, when we go into the open resolutions, when, are we going to the individual, if so, can we make recommendations to remove it?
Could we just get her to give the report first, and then we'll decide?
I was going to explain the process.
Okay, thank you.
So the report in front of you and attachments are your council resolutions update. So every week after a council meeting, my staff prepare an action items list and distribute it to all staff members, and it's based on resolutions that council makes at the meetings on Monday, and that staff have to action. So before you, going back to January 1st, 2017, is a complete list of resolutions, so it's all of the resolutions that have been made since January 1st, 2017, and then a smaller spreadsheet that shows the ones that haven't been dealt with yet. So they're either not started, in progress, or arrested, so they're not completed or canceled, like the other resolutions. We've included all of the resolutions, so you can see how, how much work we do.
Right here.
But also...
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, for transparency, I mean, that's the... And as well, so you could go back through them, and any that jump out at you, yes, we would like to hear from you today, and you can recommend to council either rescinding the motions, and something you might feel are redundant, or just that, they can just sit there and household revise new direction as soon as it's previous motions, but some you might want to understand your take off books, and we're looking for your direction on that today, so that's, however you would like to go through it, I believe the best place to start would probably be the outstanding resolutions, and see where those are at, and then if you have comments on the committee list to date, that would be...
Wait, Your Worship, all have to go page by page? We can go quick, some of these pages are just deleted unless there's, but there's literally seven or eight pages worth. You can go fast, it doesn't have to, but I think the pager, I'm sorry, Bit Helter Skelter is, or Bit Helter Skelter, I don't know, I just, there needs to be a process that meets your needs on this, and I know we kind of sound important about certain topics, but doing it sequentially would probably be easier.
I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Rudolph, the same with this, please, Counselor Armstrong, you were first.
No, I want to go with one more.
Counselor Gessler?
I just have to point out the process. Are we going through the incomplete lists first, and then go to the full 78 pager?
Yeah, I, my suggestion, well, we had, we could have created a shortlist of just the incomplete ones, and perhaps...
We didn't have that.
Yeah, they do have that, that's what I thought, right, then, I mean, what...
Counselor Armstrong?
Yes, I would like to be the complaint first, because those are the ones that we could maybe remove, probably lost staff's weight, and then if we have time, we will complete, if we still desire, because they're already complete, so I don't see that petition as up. Just my preference.
So we don't have a separate list?
Yep.
There's two pages, third page, Jim.
So there's two lists. One encompasses all the motions, and the other list just shows the ones that remain outstanding.
Page 77. Sorry, I'm sorry, first list.
And what page is...
Page 77.
That's what I meant, it's page 87.
Or attachment B, if you have on your, this right.
Anything on page 87?
Yep.
All right. Who wants to go? Anything on page 87?
Oh, I hope I wrote this one.
Jessica.
Might be a question on the rabbit.
Okay, Counselor Armstrong?
Yes, I don't really understand where it's moved in second, that this is on Counsel Fuller Neighborhood Developments, or Innovative Housing for Neighborhoods, where was it moved in second that Council directed Association Constation Committee in neighborhood associations? I don't know if that's required, that motion anymore, or where is that?
I wrote the same thing.
Sorry, could you tell me which one it is?
Said Committee of the Whole, it's Counsel Fuller Neighborhood Developments. Yeah, I don't think that's...
June 26, 27.
It's on page one, if you're on your iPad.
Page 87.
Okay, we're going, I see by attachment B.
I just don't see the need for it, because I think a lot of that's already addressed with the affordable housing strategy.
Counselor Hemmans?
I wonder if the ones that were considered striking, if you could ask staff, you know, they're in progress, where are they in progress? Are they closed? Does it, I'd need to see something be 95% of the way complete, and then we take off.
So you mean to just walk through every item, just quick comment on everyone? No, no, no.
No, just the ones we want to move. The ones that we're pulling out, I'd like to know where in progress they are. If they're at 90%, and the staff think it's worthwhile to continue, then I don't want to yank something off of their work plan, but if it's in progress, and I looked at that email yesterday, but I haven't done anything, then let's take it off.
This would be the...
Your Worship told me to comment on specifically the item regarding the infill guidelines, staff have not done any work on that, remains in our work plan, there's been no work completed to be...
Can I make a motion to scrap that? Receive that motion? Second.
Counselor Armstrong, second with Counselor Hemmans?
Just a part of clarification, it's just the one, dig at June 26th, 2019.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
It's number 251.
Ms. Gurrie?
And Your Worship, just, I briefly spoke this at the start, but just so you know, this will be the Committee of the Whole recommending council to rescind, so it'll show up 100% by the next council meeting.
Thank you for the clarification.
Counselor Brown?
Yeah, is this, like, this is just removed of all context for me, so I don't know what I'm going on.
To rescind that?
Yes, but...
Ms. Zinni, perhaps you could...
There was an application in the Reced Neighborhood Association for a height variance, or, sorry, to allow a detached suite on a property. It was a property that had two road frontages, but did not meet the definition of our bylaw, which says if you have a road and a lane, you can have a detached suite, instead it had two front, two road frontages, so we needed a variance from council. And there was some concern from the neighbors about the height of this detached building, location of the detached building, and as a result, the variance was turned down, and council recommended the subsequent motion that will review our guidelines. In that specific case, the variance was turned down, as a result, the applicant moved his detached building, attached it to the house, and built a two-story dwelling that actually belonged to some views, unfortunately, but, but that's where that, that's where the specific application.
Need further discussion?
Oh, no.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
If I may, Your Worship, thank you. And I'm, I know we want to move through these as quickly as possible, but I honestly feel that in a number of cases, a sentence or two of background or an update on progress would be useful. And so, I don't know if staff is, is here, Mr. Rudolph.
There are case sort of questions on any of these, we may not have all the answers, but we're anticipating you may want to get updates on a few things.
Can I suggest that we name each one, and if there's no questions, then fine, and if so, we can deal with it.
And if it can't be answered, we don't have to deal with it. Anything on page 87?
80s.
Yes. Counselor Stewart?
And Counselor Hemmans? So the second one from the bottom, regarding the smoking regulations, I thought that was on tonight's agenda, to, to have a revised bylaws, if that had been dealt with.
Your Worship.
The bylaws on to infer, for adoption, so tomorrow this will move from in progress to...
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, Your Worship, to Mr. Harding, the Devon Park Fields, is that, is that report in the works still?
Yeah, so I was talking to, Your Worship and Counselor before, I'm working with a number of groups to come back with a longer day session on that one, this Rockston Stadium in Caladonia, like, the longest session I've ever held, so we're working with the groups, hopefully later this spring to come back with that, and then a couple others.
Counselor Armstrong?
Yeah, the other one I have is the Nickel Street Reimagine Final Report, especially because right now we don't have a planning development and public works committee, and I would also like to ensure that Snamo has been included in that, and it hasn't been to my knowledge.
Mr. Zinni, can you tell us anything?
I don't think I have anything to add to what Counselor Armstrong said, she said correct, and ultimately did not recall it going to any of the committees for a new room, but still very much work needs to be completed.
Sorry, your voice just faded off there.
Sorry, it's, it's still the work plan, but at this point, I mean, there's no representatives or mention here, it's the public works, I know that we're working, we're working on this, but it's still in the scan.
All right. Counselor Hemmans, Vaughn, and Martin, oh, no, no, sorry, truly.
The fourth one down, it was moved in second that council referred this issue to staff to me with property orders to try to come up with a solution, I have no idea what that means.
Which, which one is that?
The fourth one from the lot.
Oh, I know that one.
And does staff, is that adequate direction to try to come up with a solution?
So there's, there was actually two motions, and I think the second one shows up later in this package, it was, this was regarding a, this is a specific case, was a tire company that was storing tires in containers, which is contrary to our bylaw, and they showed up a council, council made that motion, but then they made a subsequent motion directing staff to read our bylaw for the use of containers for storage. So because we are doing that, it's not our, we're doing that broader work on the new containers broadly across the community, we haven't taken any interaction on that specific property, so to my knowledge, they're still on, still being used on that site.
Counselor Vaughn?
That was one of my questions, so I guess the question after that comment would be, do we want to just get rid of it, or just leave it on the books? Because if we, if we change the bylaw, then, then they may be in contradゥ to the bylaw, we don't have to do any of the conversations.
Motion to rescind?
Yes.
Which one are we on?
837 Old Victoria.
1023 Storage Containers.
Oh, 837 Victoria Road. Fourth one down. Seconded?
No.
No. Nobody in a second? Oh, I guess I'm staying on. Counselor Hemmans?
Well, I, I think, my concern is that we might strike something off that poses some risk, and so I would just request that staff, that if we're looking at something and it shouldn't be removed, or whatever, that we're just made aware of that, without this, without background info, it's kind of hard to say yea or nay on any of them. So I think the question is, if we have a bylaw review going forward, and then that bylaw is going to set out new regulations that would either put this 837 Old Victoria Road in compliance or not, so we don't need to work to find a solution, we just need to get the bylaw ready.
Sorry, Worship, I'm trying to flip through, because I know it's on one of the subsequent pages where it actually has the motion to do a review of that, so I would say as long as that second motion stands, that the review's to continue, I don't think there's any reason to work with it. work with it.
Let's do individual property owners, whether or if Council decided not to continue to work on the overall review, then you may want us to go back and work with that in the same way.
We have a long list, and we don't have to treat this like clearing our minds and our laptops of emails that you think are necessary.
We quote them.
There's no, we can just leave it and move on to the next and come back to these at other meetings.
It's six...
Go ahead.
Is item number six twenty-six, twenty-seventeen Neighborhood Developments, that's on?
Yes. Page eighty-eight?
Yeah, very last one. The Kidney Foundation Challenges to Safe Lodge. Is this something we even need to do?
So, your worship, that came specifically, there was a very general ask that came from the Kidney Foundation through the Council, it got referred to the committee. Ultimately, the Kidney Foundation motion got approved, but there was this part about, well, maybe we should look at, what do we do so it's clear for these organizations coming forward? What can we offer them? Because every time, there's a little bit of a different ask. So does that mean, do we offer them kidney, we, do we raise their flag? Do we put the color on the mast? What are the things as a community we will do and what won't we do? So the intent was that the committee was going to move staff to come into the package and bring that back through for Council with the committees being suspended as well.
And that's in progress, so we're waiting for... Counselor Thor?
Thank you, worship. And I think it is important to have policy on things like that, so I still keep that. The third one down, the in blue one, bylaw seven thousand, I thought we had dealt with that. And if we haven't, then I'd be in favor of rescinding that motion.
So, Mr. Van Horn?
Yes, through the chair. Bylaw seven thousand, the intent from the last Council was to move that on for this Council to consider. Whether there's going to be amendments, it's going to be part of a larger discussion about compensation and organizational structure. We're probably going to be coming back to Council in late Q2, but this is going to be gone. Because there are some areas where that bylaw has not kept pace with the times, and some things that we may want to modify on.
So, worship, our recommendation would be to, that we intend to bring that back as part of a broader discussion around resourcing and compensation and modernizing that particular bylaw. In this case, it was being driven more from the Council level, looking at specific changes. So we will be coming back to Council with broader conversation. Probably some of that will be closed, some of that, and this is part of it, that's not... That was one of the challenges with this, was it was only looking at part of the issue, not the entire issue. So if Council wants to clear its head of that motion and with the understanding that we're coming back with a more comprehensive submission to both the organization, it's not a time, it's a place to... Other way, we'll be doing that for you.
But just that the motion, the way it's worded right now, is probably spent. It has been deferred to this Council, so I think I would support Mr. Rudolph's comment on that. And we're going to take care of it, whether that's there or not, so that wording implies a spend.
So if I may, if that's the case, I'm content to leave it, but I recall that the intent of that motion was actually to strip some things out of, out of the benefits package, and I would not support that. So I'm, I'm okay with leaving it based on what I'm hearing from Mr. Van Horn and Mr. Rudolph, if they're comfortable with that. If it's a more general review and modernization of the bylaw, fine. But if the intent was still to remove aspects of track, then I would want to rescind.
Subject to review, your worship, this report went to Council in September, October. A bylaw, a review on bylaw seven thousand was submitted. Council voted, defeated the package of recommendations, voted five four. And this is, so it was dealt, so the subject matter is still there, it's still relevant, and it's, we... So it's, it'll be part of your work program this year, what you hear to that regardless of that stuff, but the intent would be to do it in a way that I think is more comprehensive, and it's not as stripping out exercises, balancing and rationalizing the way we administer the agreement we have. It includes your conscience to have it removed, that would be fine, but that would be fine.
Counselor Armstrong?
This is the call to Mr. Harding for checking on. It's for the move direct to the Council, direct the corporate objects, execute labor attempt, abnormal search and rescue. I believe that was for the old buildings over the thing, so I don't think that motion should be on the table anymore because they don't want those properties anymore, correct? This one was dated the seventeenth of December, two thousand eighteen, or is this the new one?
It's the old one, your worship, Counselor Armstrong. Armstrong, I would keep it there for now. Right now, we're working on the agreement with the city to leave the current place, which I think will work out. We'll come back to Council later this year with the finalized lease and see, is it going to be feasibility on that building right now? If the feasibility proves that they can't fill what they need, then they still may come back to Council, it goes up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's enough for page eighty-eight. Page eighty-nine? Counselor Bonner?
Just got one there with my name on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's taking us along.
There's a few with your names.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Counselor Vaughn?
So I'm thinking this is probably redundant now, we don't need it.
I disagree.
Because it's coming later, because I think we've already talked about it.
It's coming to one of our sessions.
Ms. Curry?
Thank you, worship. So not unlike the bylaw seven thousand motion, it is coming regardless, so I don't think removing the motion just matters either way. So it'll be complete once, once the report is brought to you on the status. It'll be marked the next day as deemed by me and my...
The report, your worship, would look very similar to this. That would be a status, a list of seventy-three seventy-four recommendations, good status. And it's, it's as clean and simple as that. I understand where Counselor Bonner is going to come in. If Council, it will be received for information, but if you're inclined not to feel that's necessary to have that as an agenda item, that's a different conversation. Certainly available, I think you all have copies of it, how do you want to handle that issue? It's possibly one of the larger issues on this list.
Counselor Armstrong?
Um, are we done with that?
Yes, we're not going to do anything.
I'm wondering about the Mayor McKee's notice to find sites for federally regulated recognized supervised consumption service. I don't think there even is any federally regulated ones, is there, Mr. Woodburn?
Counselor?
Yeah. Wouldn't that be up to the court to do, I guess would be my question. But I think they should be funded, not us.
Mr. Lindsay?
Just on that point, your worship, on this coming Monday, you have a session Monday afternoon, and at that time, I'll be bringing forward a report on the OBS consumption service options. But I do agree generally, the OBS is on all the authority. They're down five locations.
So I would rescind it because I don't think it should be our staff doing that. I think it should be we, our staff, finding sites and making it on the board, and we can edit purposes only, worship.
Does anyone, any reason to keep... Page nine?
Seconded.
Counselor Vaughn?
Oh, no, no, no.
All right, Counselor Armstrong is moving, Counselor Brown is seconded.
I didn't want to speak. But I speak to her. It's something that like, I would like to see it get done and to progress, and if, and if it's, it'll be nice to have the update on it, but if it requires, you know, the city to put pressure to like move it forward, then, yeah, I may not be supportive of taking this off, even though I do understand it's in the jurisdiction, but I would like to be able to get it done.
Need further discussion on the motion? Counselor?
Oh, and I still believe that it shouldn't be our staff doing that. I believe it should be we, our staff, that finds locations, they can bring them forward, work with our staff. I don't think we should be directing our staff to find, when they don't even know what the... Now we're asking them to be experts in the health area, so I really struggle with that. I think it's one less thing that they need to worry about, and then when it comes, I myself will propose to the... I'll be in favor of consumption sites, but not, what's the other term?
Overlooked.
Safe ejection sites, those are the ones I'm opposed, consumption sites. Thank you.
Need further discussion?
That's a question of counsel.
All those in favor of the motion? Contrary?
Yeah. I don't think it really matters, yeah.
It's got a good counsel.
That's right. It's coming back to Council.
Anything further on page...
Yes, your worship.
Yes?
Six eleven, two twenty eighteen. The, to parks, and is this an option in or in that area?
It's from...
Twenty-six?
Model aircraft.
Model aircraft at East Wellington Park.
So, your worship, we're currently working on that land use plan for that park. That land use plan will come back for the park plan. Not to prejudge that part of it, but it has looked well for that location, but we do like, we'd like to do some, forgive the pun, some pilot projects in some other parks, the tri, the tri...
So I would motion to rescind that because we know another report's coming, and that would all encompass.
Why would we rescind if it's in progress and we don't know?
Yeah, why not leave it?
Or would we just leave it?
Okay.
I want you to come over to my house and deal with my boarding issues, though. Do you think we're going to page eighty-nine?
Four twenty-three, twenty eighteen. Support for parades, it was moved in second to Council's support, and I will provide twenty eighteen by providing block gates. Like, didn't we deal with this in the budget when we increased our capacity for having someone who does that actually in staff? That works with them, with organizations?
I think this was to encompass more than just the pride.
Yes. It's the second, interest groups.
It's the second and third, yeah.
The other ones that are after the nine, the whole pride, still more. We're actually going to talk a little bit about this in our workshop on the finances of the lab and the grant.
Again, in fairness, this is not dealt with, still in progress and not settled, and awaiting Council's decision. So I see no reason to deal with it today, I didn't have a report. Unless I'm being obstinate or stupid about this, my concept is that if things are being worked on, we shouldn't be taking them off the list if they're not completed. But if there's no intention to deal with them at all, that's, thank Counselor Armstrong?
I've got another one to remove, and that is the Phase Two of the Core Service Review. I don't think we should have staff starting on that because we've dealt with Page One. Oh, sorry, Page ninety, because I'm working on it here. Well, I'm working on it here, sorry.
It's all right. Anything further on page eighty-nine? On to page ninety. Counselor Armstrong?
Yeah, I would like to remove, rescind the, make recommendations on this book of the Phase Two Core Review until we have actually looked at Phase One, and then we can always bring it back later.
Seconded by Counselor Thor. Counselor seconded. Counselor truly wanted to second it as well? Any, we're going to let Counselor Thor, just the senior man, so to speak, have it today. Any questions or discussion on this? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
So I, please, see can one, unless Mr. Lindsay was to advise otherwise, I'm not sure that I would support us pursuing the permitting of these structures and making the necessary changes to allow them.
I don't know if I would, if, your worship, I would anticipate that at the end of this, we'd have a permitting process, but I think it may be worth reviewing our regulations. We've seen a proliferation of these container use from, everything from residential use through to industrial use across the city. They do have concerns with them. There are fire life safety issues about the use of containers. There has been some fairly significant, there's been some deaths and accidents because of misuse of containers. So it is something that, a review of it, I think is appropriate. We do have rules in our bylaw right now, which are relatively restrictive. They are limited to very short periods of time for residential and a little bit longer for commercial and industrial, but it may be that if some of these life safety issues can be addressed, maybe we can look at it.
It's just, the reason I, I wonder is if this is just a case of us not enforcing our current regulations?
Well, I think this, this came out of, as I said earlier, our motion where staff were attempting to enforce the regulations, and we were told to put it on, essentially, and to do this review. So we have not been aggressively enforcing our containers unless we get a complaint.
Are we just moving on from this one then?
I guess. I would like to see it rescinded, but I don't think, I can wait for more confirmation.
Counselor Bonner?
Six nineteen, twenty seventeen, rule by Counselor Hong, blasting neighborhoods, move the second that Council directs staff to develop an information session for when handwork blasting placed in neighborhoods. I think this should be the responsibility of the contractor?
I was going to say, it was still on page ninety.
Yeah, it's, that's on page ninety-one.
We don't have numbers on our...
Sorry. Well, the primitive guy at the end does, so you're going to have to go with him.
So what's at the top of your non-number?
Is there anything further on page ninety? The last one is the SPCA one, eight fourteen, two thousand seventeen.
Yes, Counselor Hammond?
Three nineteen, twenty eighteen, the top of the page, I believe that's completed.
Which one is that one?
The response to house social and safety issues in the downtown, no?
Yeah, at the top of ninety is response to house social and safety issues.
I'm still looking for that place, the house, the Eton Drop Center, I'm just...
But it's Percy Park.
Mr. Lindsay, Chilinci Frye?
Your worship, that, again, that's the only reason, and Counselor Armstrong's mentioned, the only reason that I have that under there is still, is still in progress, is because specifically item I, which is to look for locations for potential drop. Again, and it's something on this, on next Monday that we are coming to bring on.
Chief Frye, if you wish to add?
So further to the last one, it was up regarding the SPCA. So regarding the letter from the SPCA, the rabbits, the motion regarding rabbits, motion regarding animals in pet stores, those are all being addressed in our Animal Control bylaw that we're just modifying the final stages on, and will be prepared to bring that before Council within the next six weeks to two months.
So the bunnies would bounce?
So shouldn't we rescind those too, then? Is that what you're asking for?
No, because we're...
They're all going to be tied together and will be all addressed.
Okay.
Again, with great respect, the concept is not to rescind motions where work is being undertaken, because one would argue then that you can't continue to do the work, and we're not going to throw away the work.
There's another motion to that, that's right.
Anything further on page ninety? If not, page ninety-one?
Last one.
Okay.
Six nineteen, two thousand seventeen, Counselor Hong, blasting neighborhoods?
Yeah, I'm of the opinion that it should be the responsibility of the contractor, not staff, to set these up. So it should probably be in a bylaw.
Your worship, Lindsay, your worship, through Counselor Bonner. So a review of our soils bylaw, which includes blasting, is underway. Staff are doing that right now. At this point, there's nothing in the bylaw that requires modification, but it is something we are going to be looking at and hoping to bring back to Council.
Yeah, and the only reason I brought this, this one specifically, it says staff has to set up these arrangements, and I didn't think that was necessarily appropriate.
Not anticipating the bylaw will save that, but draft by law.
So I would just leave it and let it die?
We'll, we'll blow past that one.
Counselor Hammond?
The second one after that, moved in second that Council directs staff to review street entertainers regulation bylaw. Probably more a question to what end? Like, what problem are we looking to solve by doing a review of that?
That's my motion. Because there's a lot of issues on how it's applied and where it's applied, and it hasn't been updated for years, and we had delegation, delegation talking to them. So unless Mr. Woodburn is up there, if there's current, this, or Chief Frye, sir? Street Entertainment?
Correct, so through, through, your worship, so the individuals that have concerns regarding that bylaw is more on the location. We, it is an old bylaw that we will look at over time, but it was some of the committee's... We, it is an old bylaw that, that we will look at over time, but it was, some of the, uh, committees have taken place regarding, uh, this, one of our individuals, he's no longer, he passed away. Uh, but it was really about, and, and we do need it for licensing and community for the street entertainers. So the bylaw does need to stay in place. But as far as, uh, her main concern was about the shade. Uh, no access to shade during that. But we are not proactively enforcing, uh, street entertainers bylaw predominantly through the process. So it is on the agenda to review it, but it's down the list.
Still in progress. Counselor Martin?
I was fortunate, I think, um, to inherit all of Catherine Davis's work on her bylaws and history from beginning to the end. So I know in speaking to her, her, most of her concerns was health and safety of, for the street entertainers.
Counselor Turley?
Sorry, I turned it down. Hopefully you can hear me now. Um, so the, the one that looks like a duplication on Page, around Page 91 now?
Yes.
Okay, is the last one about the, uh, uh, plastic bags?
Yes.
With the motion, uh, the first one, um, is virtually the same thing. Very close to it.
Quite different.
And we're not found any plastic bags regulated?
That's true. There's big difference.
Yeah, it is. So I was just wondering why we'd be working on two, deal with the same item? Unless somebody's got the information that they're, you know, how to work on it to, on it to equip them.
So it is a duplicate. Where was the other one?
There, sir.
This one is asking for a report.
And second one to follow. So we should rescind this one?
And before we comment on anything of that nature, I believe there were materials provided. I, I think this one is still, uh, still active and we should move on, Ms. Curry.
Um, so the last law, Page 91, um, that was regarding a delegation from Mr. Paul Manley and others. And I think that one is, you could say it's been completed. And it, um, it was, um, asking for a staff report. So that part of it has been completed. Bylaw, et cetera, is being worked on and that is to regulate non-demand. But this, um, language in the last one, if that's the one we referred to, and how it speaks of banning, was because that was the language the delegations is used and council directed that report. But I think you could say it's definitely been completed to have a staff that's reported that.
Is there any value in us to... I mean, just to mark this as completed is not going to hurt anything, so.
I agree, so that's an error on my part.
All right. Anything further on Page 91? Page 92, the last of them?
Uh, 814, 2017. Coordinated meeting between CINMO, Greater Nanaimo Harbor Association, City and Nanaimo discuss the next steps regarding nation-to-nation discussions.
Cho's is not started, but I think we're doing it to not pursue it to this motion. Is there any harm? Counselor Turley?
I'm questioning, given what we're trying, sorry, I turned this down. What we're trying to do is to work with Nanaimo Port Authority and this one specifically wants us to work with, um, uh, let's see, Greater Nanaimo Harbor Association. They're two different entities in that.
Oh, we are a different thing.
It's a brandy too.
So this is a different time and a different set of players, uh, your worship. This was, it's not the port authority, it's another group. Yes, the intent was to, uh, direct that, facilitate a session with the city as a band and the other entity related to harbor affairs meet. That was the direction at that time from that council.
This was in fact basically, if I can phrase it so delicately, um, uh, the, the, tried to create a unified fight between the city and harbor users. Uh, against port authority. Uh, it hasn't been started. Is there a, a motion to? Rescind, seconded by Counselor Martin. Any discussion on this? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Is that, uh, 43, 2017?
814.
1417.
Victor Nema's the one that's responsible?
814.
814, 2017.
Do we have one that's similar to that?
Yes. Anything further on Page 92?
Is that the one with the supervised consumption service again, proposed on bylaws?
Yes. 179, 2018.
Because those committees don't exist anymore, so I think we should remove it or rescind it because we don't have those committees. And that goes to the other motion.
Ms. Curry? Any comment?
Uh, I'm just wondering if Mr. Lindsay has commented on that before the council sees.
I, I think you, you could rescind that motion and again, we're still going to bring forward a report on Monday and we have seen council's direction on next step. I think in fact, we did, if I recall, we did go to the, one meeting and reduce the topic to the committees. But we never went back and I think it's got to spin it right out that we never got back to getting direction from the committees. So I would suggest that that one...
Motion rescind? Counselor Thorpe, seconded Counselor Bonner. Any discussion?
Which one are we looking at?
State Consumption Service.
State Consumption, 79, 218. Any discussion? All those in favor? Contrary? That wasn't a contrary?
Oh, no, that was in favor.
Very good. Unanimous? Thank you. Counselor Thorpe?
Thank you, your worship. The one after that, I'm just curious, what the, uh, review of electoral area fees, um, is that something that the city still wishes to pursue? And if so, then of course we should leave it there. But I know it's not started yet.
Ms. Curry?
Um, I think that possibly the best person here to, um, answer that would be a combination of Mr. Harding and Ms. Mercer. About the, um, electoral area fees? Richard?
I don't know what it's for.
May not be the best choice.
Well, we have a, we have a new five-year agreement about two years in then. So if you really can negotiate an agreement, then that's more of a question when that, when the agreement is done.
Yeah, there was when, if we're talking to sports agreements.
I think so. That was always confusing that motion was on.
So if we're, if we're talking to the, uh, the, um, the regional sports agreement, that was they, every five years, I believe, they have to do a survey and it reviews, um, of the use of our facilities by outside, um, yes, outside property. And then we, then based on that calculation, the RDN pays us so much. So that was done, like Richard had said, two years ago, so then next one will be about two years.
Counselor Bonner?
I had it on my list to pick up to.
Ms. Curry?
Um, I think a motion to rescind would be best then for that because, um, because I think this motion came after the renewal agreement was done. So if council could rescind this motion, it would be helpful.
Move Counselor Bonner, seconded Counselor Turley. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Unanimously? Anything further on Page 92, Counselor Bonner?
Sorry, I missed this on the prior, previous page, I'm sorry. You guys are going in a different way of...
Going in order.
Uh, 514, 2018. Uh, Finance Allowed Committee Recommendations, move the second that council obtained a legal opinion regarding release of human resources, personal matters, uh, outlined on Page 75 of committee agenda. Is this necessary now?
Sorry, 514, 218?
What page is it on?
91.
90?
It's up, it's up one page.
What page is it on this one?
31.
What other page? It's one of the other pages.
It's the next one up on the, um, still open.
What does it say again?
What's it on?
Finance Allowed Committee Recommendations.
Oh. KPMG Audit?
No. 514, 2018.
That's what I have.
Your worship.
Yes.
Can I ask to comment on that? I believe, um, that is still in progress. It's under Ms. Mercer, so she could, um, talk to it, speak to it further. But I believe there is some policies that KPMG recommended and, um, and Ms. Mercer at HR are working on those policies.
I think there's some confusion.
That's good because it's not on Page 91. Whatever Counselor Bonner's reading ahead.
See, I don't know which one is on. Oh, it is KPMG Audit.
I'm saying, your worship, I believe the one that Mr. Bonner is speaking of is, um, is in the...
It's not a legal opinion?
Um, it's a legal, okay. All right.
Thank you. All right.
I started with...
Counselor Charlie?
I do have a question and I don't know if staff can help me on this one, but that was on the fingerprinting one, which hasn't been started yet. Regarding of, we see a non-reimbursement fingerprinting charge scheduled to be... Does go on the Victor M. I don't know if Ms. Mercer knows that.
Some page 11 and it's not started.
I can't remember what concern was over that because it said fingerprinting and there was two words or something.
If I recall that meaning correctly, it was someone had the same name as someone who had a record, criminal record. She had to get fingerprinted in order to prove she was me. And she asked the city to reimburse her. Or to look at a policy and to reimburse people who have the same names.
Yeah.
It's been on.
For $25?
I would like to rescind that myself. No, I would like to rescind it because first of all, I don't think we have control.
Well, I guess like we do, but.
Yeah, we do. You have to pay the money anyhow, so I don't understand, stand that because you don't pay extra to get fingerprinted.
If I recall correctly, you have to, when you have the same name as someone who has a...
Yeah, you get fingerprinted.
Yeah, you have to go deeper, right? And that deeper investigation, someone has to pay for.
No, they still pay the same dollars regardless of why they're standing.
Well, that, that's different than what this is saying.
Counselor Turley and then Ms. Van Long?
Just, just to clarify, because I've gone through this before, I've read stuff myself. If you put it down as you require criminal record check because you're doing volunteer work, there's no charge. If you have the misfortune of having somebody have the same birthday, you have a criminal record, costs $25 for this volunteer or not. You have your fingerprints taken so you can prove you're not that person.
Mr. Paul? I'm going to echo, uh, much of what Counselor Turley said because I do have gone through it. I've got a twin, of course, about someone who shares the same gender and birth data as well. In this particular case, yeah, I don't believe it's the city that takes money. It goes, you had to get them like a bankrupt rose to the prosecutor general or something like that. So it's, it's the city charging.
So it has nothing to do with the city in the direct sense? Do we wish to rescind it then?
Move to rescind.
Move to rescind, seconded Counsel Armstrong. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Whoop, I got a, I got a question. I got a question. So if somebody goes, that's going to be volunteering for the city, say it's somebody volunteering for parks or whatever. We've got volunteers, right? And they go to, uh, get fingerprinted and it happens that they got a twin and it's got to go more in depth. Say if they don't have the money to pay for that more in-depth investigation, is it a barrier for them to be a volunteer? Is that, is that why that was in place? That, because if it is, then we should reconsider.
It's just your first fingerprint.
It's not meant for that contest.
Mr. Chair, I don't recall how this particular one, I came to be here.
It's not...
So it's in the, in the city of Nanaimo's fees and charges by law under Police Services RCMP. One of the services is criminal record checks, regular, $25. Criminal record checks, volunteer, nonprofit, $10, and then fingerprinting, $25. So it's in our city by law.
So we are charged. I don't think we wish to rescind charging bylaw, if you have great respect, the motion's on the floor, it's been seconded. Uh, I don't think we're going to, we should be rescinding a bylaw into charging this kind of minimal discussion. Staff report, not appropriate staff here to answer. We can always do this at a later date. Counselor Bonner?
Uh, the, I think the, the motion was to make those things reimbursable as opposed to a charge. And so if we...
I, I appreciate that, but my thinking is that it should be a policy that be arrived at with a great deal more consideration, perhaps even a staff report, if we go back and change it. Because there's generally speaking ramifications to every clause change to some, to some other aspect of how we charge, how we charge. So I'm just a bit concerned and I don't see that, at this point, there's a public outcry around it. If this motion is defeated today, it can be dealt with again some other time in the future.
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Thank you very much.
Your worship, just for clarification, um, what was Counselor Armstrong, oldest or neighbor?
Me?
She did raise her hands over.
I'm in favor of rescinding, sorry.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Everybody else was opposed.
Oh, that's right. It's an issue, I think, you know, we can certainly request a report from staff on it generally at some point. Um, anything further on council resolutions update?
Yes.
Counselor Bonner?
Um, 612, 2017. This is the completed motion and, uh, I would like to send it. And by Counselor Bessick, we are, we are...
Why would we complete a rescinded motion?
It's Rails to Trails Anchor Round Initiative Session. Or, or sorry, I'm not sure if it's completed or not. But it's a motion on, uh, on, on, on the books that the city of Nanaimo approved the following conversion of the rail system for parcel authority with a trail and completed pedestrian-centric trail to parts filled with cooms. And whereas the funding for improvements to trail have not been delivered from the province, therefore be resolved to council support. Friends of Rails to Trails Anchor Round Initiative to convert the end-end rail bed to a multi-use trail and request that the island corridor continue with Friends to Rails to Trails, Friends of Rails to Trails Anchor Round, Volunteers to Work Towards Accomplishing This Goal.
You're moving, you're sending it that?
Yes.
A secondary? Sector, Counselor Gesselbro? Counselor Turley?
So if it's outside the city of the island, is it? I mean, most areas you mentioned are not the end of it. Why would it be there in the first place?
It has to do basically with public support. Previous council is aligning itself, obviously, with the group that says abandon the railway and this council, I, we was aligning ourselves with people that wish to preserve the corridor, the potential rail in the island. So for what it's worth, this council will be voting in support of Counselor Bonner's motion. So, Ms. Curry?
So, your worship, because this has been completed, um, rescinding a motion that's already been done, we can't go back in the minutes and remove a motion that's already been made and then, um, acted upon. And I believe it was just in conjunction with the regional district of Nanaimo, the city of Nanaimo approved the following. And I don't believe, um, the city approving those actions, um, really can result in much action anyways because it's not our jurisdiction or, or, um, I, I, I understand the intent behind wanting to rescind, but I don't think we really can procedurally.
I think you expressed our sentiments here today, at least. We've been heard. Counselor Bonner, Counselor Rod?
Is that, do we motion second that one?
No, I think...
Wait a second.
Oh, ended.
Ended.
Yes?
So we probably need to, I would draw the motion.
Consent?
I consent.
I would like to make another motion.
Very good.
43, 2017. Presentation, Nanaimo Marine Association is moved as second that council support the Greater Nanaimo Waterfront Association in effort to work with CINMO, First Nation, City of Nanaimo, Regional District of Nanaimo. The marine is so industry and the community at large to form a not-for-profit society tasked with becoming the official steward of Nanaimo's waterfront properties. Is that the same thing?
Yeah, your worship, so before you got a senator, I'm sorry, Counselor Bonner, but whatever is in the report, has it been completed?
It's been, probably been completed because I started at the top of the big one and worked my way down.
So you're, you're on the 70th?
That's where we send the letters.
So again, it's already been done. Yeah, it's already been done and acted upon.
Pass another motion at a later date.
Right, exactly. You could, you could create another motion, um, that supersedes this motion, but we can't rescind a motion that's already been acted upon.
I think in conjunction with our strategic plans, there may be a number of things we will wish to send signals for, we had an motion... of things we will wish to send singles for a motion, so I want to, Counselor Bonner, to provide.
As well, I believe the other motion that was similar with the Nanaimo Marine Association, you did rescind that one, because it hadn't been fully acted upon.
Counselor Gesselbrock?
So, the, this, just to point of clarity on the process here, so, we're going to be going through now the seventy-eight page?
No, no.
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 I think, yeah, it was just...
The other one, receiving for information, and this was, unless there's something, and there's nothing that says you can't explore, get an update or a comment on anything, but the rescind is, I guess, not an option.
Right, it's not an option.
But if you have a question around that, it's up to the chair, if anyone has...
You'll have to get the acting there to, to, to that pass.
Following on that, this, what Counselor Bonner is doing then right now, is kind of reviewing these old items, and then we might flag them and be like, this is not a policy direction that this new council wants to go in and have staff time devoted to, we might have to make a new motion to derail that train.
Now, understanding my cheekiness, Counselor Bonner has been very helpful in reminding the council that decisions that may have indicated a direction in the home of you, it is no longer curried or shared by the members of council, and I think it will be appropriate times, I say, around that age and then we'll want to make our views clear. Thank you. Anything further before we vote on the motion to receive? Motion to receive? We're already in that, I think, for a while. Any further discussion?
Your worship, I don't think there has been a motion.
You think?
I second Counselor.
I'm sorry.
Well, then, we'll let council, we'll let Counselor Bonner second it. Any further discussion?
We don't want to spend any time discussing these things at the moment, though.
You and Counselor Bonner can go.
You're a constituted court, you can go off and put your...
Be sure they're not on the agenda's priority.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to receive? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you very much. We're on to question period. Any questions today? Well, Ms. Curry, we didn't quite match Mr. Rudolph's challenge, but we didn't do badly today.
Almost split it up. It was a debate whether this would be a full session or a shorter session. So, we seem all right.
A motion, a motion to adjourn? Next week? Second? Counselor Bonner? All those in favor? Motion carried? Five thirty? Five thirty? Show on the door.